It's six o'clock and we're gonna go ahead and get started with our meeting. Jeff Vaughn, could you do some prayers please?
Absolutely. Father, we come before you this evening and we thank you for the opportunity that we have to be here to exercise our freedoms and to see local government at work. We ask that you be with the council as they go about their business, help them to act in a way that's pleasing to you and help us all to act in a way that is in accordance with your will. Forgive us where we fail you, it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Senator Clark, could you please call the roll?
May I buy three?
Here.
City Attorney Darren Rice.
Here.
Alderman Dewey Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cody Atterbury.
Here.
Alderman Clifford Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Tyler Lampley.
Present.
Alderman Eugene McGill.
Present.
Alderman Jerry Lizzenby.
Here.
Alderman Terry Stahl.
Here.
Alderman Gary Moore.
Here.
Minutes of the May tenth twenty twenty-two meeting presented to you, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman McGill, to approve the minutes of the May tenth meeting. Roll call vote Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterbury.
Yes.
Approval of the bills, current bills presented for payment, do I hear a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
No second.
I have a motion by Alderman Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Lizzenby, to approve paying the bills for this meeting. Roll call vote Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
It passes. Uh, at this time, uh, we have a section for public comments. If you'd like to address the city council, you're afforded three minutes. Please come up to the front, uh, and please tell us your name and where you live and then proceed.
My name is Brad Winter and live in Fairfield.
Please come up and use the microphone if you wouldn't mind, Greg. Thank you.
My name is Brad Winter. I live in thirteen S C Road in Fairfield. I hope not anything's out of order, but I want to clarify something tonight before this council meeting goes into further. I understand that Brent McGuire is going to possibly be a nomination for chief of the Fairfield Police Department. I'm not sure if I know all of you, but I retired out of Fairfield Police Department after twenty-five years, so I speak with some inside unique knowledge and perspective. I also understand that Brent has been a victim of her vicious, uncalled-for campaign of flat-out lies. I haven't seen him myself, but he was so consistent about lies about his part in the police department before he left doing private business. I was chief of police at that time, and I want to clarify, the rumors, the accusations are that Brent was compelled to leave the department. He ran him off, did what he wanted to quit, and I just want to go on record unequivocally that there is no truth to that whatsoever. When Brent submitted his resignation to me, I lost some of my professional cool, because I would lean back from my chair with my hand to the side of my head and say, no, no. He made the best decision that he could, it was a conscientious decision to leave the department. I wish to God not, I would love you had kept him, so if you've heard this rumor that he left under threats, that he was about to be fired, that is flat out a lie. I'm just there. Whoever's spreading these stories and they know how stories get around, I'm not personally seeing it. But this is something that needs to be addressed before any decisions are made. I've known Brent for, couldn't tell you the exact number of years. I did his background investigation, I watched him rise up, he ranks a sergeant detective. So I didn't give any number of extra duties, extra responsibilities, and I'm not sure what to wait for. Some of those duties and responsibilities were particularly unpleasant, particularly difficult to do, and I understand that may be the accusations, where some of his accusations are staying from. No, no, I learned them the other first thing. But I just want to assure council that this is absolutely untrue, and any indication that Brent was forced to leave the police department is flat out a lie.
You're on three minutes, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Any other folks that would like to speak to the city council tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item one. We can do this any one of a number of ways, gentlemen. Uh, I could go through and mention each one of the nominations, one through nine, and then if it's your pleasure, you could pull out which ones you'd like to pull out for a separate vote. Is that, is that preferable? Is that okay with you? Okay, so the nominations are Resolution One for Fire Chief Andrew Miller. Agenda item two is a resolution for Assistant Fire Chief Wade Gregory. Agenda item three, the resolution is for Police Chief Brent McGuire. Number four, Resolution Collector D L Rogers. Agenda item five, Resolution Treasurer Caleb Warren. Number six, Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Stan Phelps. Agenda item seven, Resolution Police Pension Board Terry Weedman. Agenda item eight, Resolution Zoning Board Nikki Rathie and Patrick Halber. Uh, those are for three-year terms. And, right, oh, no, there's one, I'm sorry. One is three and one's two.
Zoning Board is five.
Oh, five, I'm sorry.
Police pension is two.
Got it.
Everything else, and, and the others, the top ones are one.
All right. Okay, very good. All right, five, I'm sorry, I misspoke on the, no, that's okay. Uh, re- uh, agenda item eight is the zoning board, which is a five-year term. I'm sorry for that. And, uh, agenda item nine, Resolution Recreation Committee, Tyler Lampley is the nomination. That is a three-year term if I'm honest.
Yes, correct.
All right, so what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I think we need to pull out two of them, one being the police chief and then one being recreation committee, because I will need to abstain.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
See, I'd like to pull out one and two for a separate vote.
So we're talking about one and two and three and nine so far. Anyone else?
One and two for, uh, fire for him and then three, please.
One and two together.
Right.
One, two.
But you're, are, are you gonna, I mean, are you saying that you wanna pull those two names out or you're just?
No, no, I'm just gonna.
You're just, he's gonna abstain for one.
I'm gonna stand.
Yeah, that way, those two need to be pulled out, so he can abstain and not abstain.
Right, that's what we're doing. We're, we're pulling out the ones that are gonna have to be.
One and two together.
One and two together.
Oh, okay, all right. One and two together. Three and nine. Any other, any other ones? All right, so let's start with one and two together. Do I have a motion for the, uh, Fire Chief and Assistant Fire Chief, the nominations being Andrew Miller and Wade Gregory?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Weaver, to approve the appointment of Andrew Miller's Fire Chief and Wade Gregory as Assistant Fire Chief. Roll call vote Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Abstain.
Moore.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Okay, so that's seven yeses and an abstention, and those nominations pass. Uh, agenda item three, the resolution for Police Chief Brent McGuire. Is there a motion to put that on the floor? No motion to put it on the floor. Okay. That means it just gets passed over, okay? Uh, how about, uh, number nine, the resolution to have the Recreation Committee, that being Tyler Lampley?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Good.
Okay, uh, Moore. Stahl. Motion by Alderman Moore, seconded by Alderman Stahl, to approve the appointment of Tyler Lampley to the Recreation Committee. Roll call vote McGill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Abstain.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
And that passes. Moving on to agenda item ten, ordinance, uh, do you want to do the rest of them?
Uh, I'll go do the others.
I'm sorry, where am I missing?
All of them.
Oh, God, yes! All right, a little bit too focused here, sorry. So we have to do, um, six, seven, eight.
I'd like to do those all at once, because I.
Can, we can.
If that's okay with everybody.
That would make those.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. I wasn't trying to mess with all of them, but.
Okay, motion by Alderman Moore, seconded by Alderman Lampley, to approve the appointments of City Collector, City Treasurer, Board of Fire and Police Commissioner, Police Pension and Zoning Board appointments, as read by the mayor previously. Roll call vote Moore.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Okay. That takes care of that. We're moving now? Can I move on to number ten? Okay. All right, number ten is the ordinance setting the fee for the Class Q liquor license. If you recall, this was just something we did at the last meeting. What we didn't put on the, uh, resolution was the annual fee. Uh, we approved the Class Q. If you recall, it was the, uh, the bed and breakfast liquor license, given the fact that, um, we have, I believe, I believe it's twenty-five hundred dollars for a hotel, uh, with twenty or more rooms. So, um, thought that proportionally it would be best for the five rooms, uh, to be five hundred dollars. Any questions or concerns about that being the figure?
I've got no problem with that, and I'd make the motion if anybody, if nobody else had any questions.
I'd second that.
Motion by Alderman Lampley, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry, to approve the five hundred dollar fee for the Class Q liquor license. Roll call vote Weaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterbury.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Passes. Uh, agenda item eleven, seat bids for a salt storage shed. The, uh, engineers have put together, uh, a building under the, uh, instructions of street and bridge lead man Robert Kemp for a five hundred ton fifty by fifty, uh, a fifty by fifty structure that will hold five hundred ton of, of rock salt to be able to protect it. The way that this would work is we would have to come up with the money to be able to, uh, build the, uh, the structure, but then that money would be eligible, be reimbursed by the motor fuel tax money.
Uh, a, a little bit of a, uh, after talking to a lot of council members, you know, we went to, they're gonna get a bid on like the domes now. This is just to get bids. The council will still have the ability to approve or disapprove it. So if it comes back, I mean, with the way prices are on things, it could come back and it could be outrageous, but currently they're using a salt, salt storage shed. They're just, um, east of like the fire department. The building itself is literally on its last board. Uh, it's in really, really, really bad shape. Uh, they're losing, we're losing a lot of salt every year, plus it's open to the public.
This is the, this is the old city garage building.
I'm not for sure if that's, yeah. Uh, Dee is shaking, she said yes, so I'll go with that. Um, but, so this will be just to get. But, so this will be just to get bids, and like the mayor said, once we do do it, we do have money in the motor fuel taxes that we pay for. We pay for it upfront, we can get reimbursed from the money that we have in there. But it is the dome style that a lot of people said that they would like to see with the canvas top has a fifteen year, and then you only have to replace the canvas after that, a lot more affordable, and it's got a lot more good features to it.
So we're seeking bids, do we have a motion to be able to do that?
I'd make a motion. Jerry, Jerry make the motion.
Were you second?
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Lizzenby, seconded by Lampley to approve seeking bids for a salt storage shed. Roll call vote, Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
That passes. Agenda item twelve, the long-awaited bids came in for the water tower project. This has the recommended bid being from Caldwell Tanks Incorporated of Louisville, Kentucky. This is for the three hundred thousand gallon aerial tank. It appears with engineering to be right around one point eight million dollars. Tyler, is that?
Uh, no, one point.
Well, but you have to add engineering in.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay. So, um, is there anything, you were a part of that bid opening. Tina, is there anything else that Shannon added?
No, if you notice on the, his kind of synopsis page, that did include the three hundred thousand gallon tank and the engineering, and he did put in like ten thousand dollars of contingencies that probably won't be needed, but it's still there just in case. And also, we would end up, once that tower is built, we would end up going out for bid to take down the old tower in the middle of town, and the estimate for that would be around thirty thousand dollars and give or take on that, that price. But this is, this price here for one point eight is for the tower and engineering.
I thought the thirty thousand was rather low, but he says the steel is valuable, and so that's the reason why. Tyler, it's a little bit more than. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is it, is it more feasible to build a legged tower than a pedestal tower? Was there any consideration between the two, or? The pedestal looks like would be less maintenance.
Totally like that to the engineer, Terry never, ever questioned it, quite honestly.
Yeah, he based it on what the height we need because he has to get the height to match the frontier towers. I don't know if that's gonna change from one to the other.
It is a little more than what we thought it was going to be, Tyler, so you might want to talk about that.
And, and part of it is, we're recommending the three hundred thousand gallon because we are keeping the one million gallon. And I know there was a couple of questions about that, we are keeping the million gallon storage tank. This tower will be built right next to the million gallon storage tank. There was talks about possibly moving it a little bit offsite there, but it'll be right there. As far as funding it, we have TIF, we've got two hundred thousand from Bailey that is still earmarked. And then we have, what was the other, the big?
TIF, uh.
I'm missing something.
Bailey, there was, well, we've been, we've been putting more back.
Well, we were starting the, yeah, that'll be, once we get to the end of the year, we've been putting the sixty thousand dollars a month, which we had started with the membranes under Gary where we started having a fund for just water projects and things like that because they are absorbently expensive. So we've had Kayla continue that, we've gotten two payments in there now, we've got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that account. By the end of the year, we'll be between six and seven hundred thousand. We won't have to pay quite upfront. He says there'll be, you know, so much money down, so we'll have a few more months. But if we continue the sixty thousand, we'd be looking at needing to finance for one year the remaining six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. So we'll either need to use, if we can use the line of credit, we'll use that, otherwise we need to go out for financing fairly soon. And, but it'll be about a one-year payoff and there will be no impact in general fund.
Did you get any clarification from Clay City whether we could use the line of credit?
I would talk to them.
We can.
Yes.
Will you even get any keywords though?
No, it isn't.
I'd make a motion, we accept this bid.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Alderman Moore, seconded by Alderman Eccleberry to approve the bid from Caldwell Tanks Incorporated for the new water tower. Roll call vote, Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Passes, telling somebody I'll be just so happy when they have paid out. And when they unleash the artists in town, and there are twenty artists, and eighteen of them are painting our rusty water tower. I'll be really glad when that is not a, a subject of their painting. Ordinance, authorizing the sale of property, this goes pretty far back. This is the garment factory on Highland, Darren, I'll have you explain that if you don't mind.
Sure, basically, we've had the records at the publication period. These are the tracks that compose the garment factory. If this is approved, I have also, you should have in your packet of material, the proposed real estate contract that I would seek to have entered with the industrial trust. It also provides the provision that, that this has to be conveyed to the current occupants that are there. That was the original plan, that's kind of what caused a little bit of, some of the delay with some of that. And if for some reason it, that subsequent part failed, they would convey it back to the city by way of quick clean deed. That's, the other terms are pretty fairly standard terms of a real estate sales contract. They've submitted their bid, I've spoken with Brian Williams of the industrial trust. I believe that we can probably get this closed in about two weeks, I've already got the title work back. And I don't think, I think they'll have the funds available to, if, if it's approved by the council. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Alderman Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Lampley to approve the ordinance for the sale of the property. Roll call vote, Eccleberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
All right. That gets us to agenda item fourteen, which is the FOP contract. It would be, it'll be up to you exactly how we handle this. We could do this like we did last week where we get all of our business done with the exception of the FOP contract. Will we go into executive session to discuss negotiations and other things? And if that's, if that's your pleasure, but if not, we can go to executive session right now if we want to.
I, I think we finish up the rest of the stuff and then we'll come back to it.
Yeah, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right. Mayor's report. I gleaned some information that I thought was interesting from the twenty twenty census that has just been released. The median age of residents of Fairfield, forty-two point seven years of age. Around thirteen percent of the adults do not have a high school diploma. On the other hand, or the other end of educational attainment, eleven percent have bachelor's degrees. The average city resident takes at least twenty minutes to get to work, and fifty-six percent have two or more vehicles. The average income per person is thirty-four thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars with an eight point four percent below the poverty line group. The largest employers in our, are our schools. There was a time when it was manufacturing, and then it was oil, and then it was agriculture. But in Fairfield, proper educational, the schools are the biggest employers, twenty-six point nine percent. And next on the list, retail sales at sixteen point seven percent. Thirty percent of those responding to the census say they rent their residences in Fairfield. We have a lot of rental property. Other matters, testing for police openings occurred on Saturday with six candidates taken written as well as physical exams. None of the candidates were successful. I think it was impressive that most of the current police officers, including those currently in the academy, showed up to encourage the candidates. I'll be speaking with Terry Weedman of the police and fire commission to come up with a new strategy. The next academy is slated for August the thirtieth, so we have a deadline of July twenty-second to be able to get seats. We will test again between now and then. The city helped, the county health department set up tomorrow's e-waste recycling event on Southwest Tenth Street behind the police station. Kudos to Nicole Schoenborn for her quick response to the need and her idea of first collecting items and then bringing in trailers to transport the waste. The event goes on from seven thirty in the morning to five thirty P M tomorrow, and hopefully will make a huge dent in that pent-up need to be able to have e-waste taken care of. And upon the advice of our natural gas consultant today, we requested a blend of price for three thousand decathermes for the two months of June twenty twenty-two and June twenty twenty-three. The market is highly unstable at the moment, it's believed that we can mitigate somewhat those higher costs that are going on in the market. Any questions concerning the mayor's report? Hearing none, are there any miscellaneous comments on the part of city council members?
I just want to say that city boys don't get the thanks enough, and I just want to personally thank them all for the job they do.
Thank you, sir. If nothing else, then.
Mayor, what was the price of the garment factory?
Tom, I've told you more than once, this is a public meeting. If you have questions for me, please ask me after the meeting.
It's not a question for you, sir.
Well, it's not, it's not proper for you to interrupt the meeting.
Question is, what is the price for the garment factory sale?
I'll tell you that it was twenty thousand dollars, but please don't interrupt the meetings anymore, Tom, or. I just can't, I can't put up with people shouting out questions during the course of a public meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
I'll make a motion. No, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Did you have another question? Oh, sorry, to, to discuss section two, twenty-one minutes of closed session meetings, two, six, setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, and section two C two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its, and/or its representatives. Okay, I need a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Eccleberry, seconded by Stahl to adjourn into executive session. Roll call, Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
Eccleberry?
Yes.
Thank you very much for being here, if there's a vote and a, we'll have a vote. If we have a vote, it'll be here after the closed session. Thank you for being here.
All right, do you have a motion that we, uh?
No, we're not.
We are back in, okay, thank you. We're back in, uh, in open session. Um, concerning the FOP contract, are there, um, issues that you would like to discuss, uh, as a city council concern, uh, the, uh, proposed contract?
I personally think that we have, I have some concerns with the residency clause in that. Uh, you know, I think you need, we have to look at the safety of our, of our residents and, uh, a forty-five mile residency, I believe, uh, puts our residents at risk. We had, not recently, we had the, uh, incident with Deputy Riley on Interstate sixty-four, uh, which we needed to get there in a hurry, and we did. Recently, there was a soft lockdown at the Fairfield Community High School, and I believe it took, uh, fifteen minutes to respond. Uh, and, and I think that we just, uh, it just puts our residency, our, our customers, our, our residents at a safety risk of getting there when needed.
And.
And the officers also, I mean.
Yeah, I'd like to look at the, you know, the officers, you know, for backup if anything happens and stuff like that. Forty-five minutes living away is just, for me personally, at this point, you know, just, just, just a safety issue.
Anyone else? Is there a motion concerning the FOP contract? Okay, if there's no motion, it's gonna die for lack of a motion. It, it is not passed by the fact that there's no motion on the floor. Uh, would I, sir, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir.
Motion by.